Thank you. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, May 20th. This is the call to order. And at this time, just a brief announcement before we start, just so you know, Councilwoman Gussi is excused due to a graduation tonight, as well as Councilmember Brown and Vice Mayor Farrell, who are attending on the city's behalf ICSC, which is the International Shopping Centers Conference, to which they are doing their best to attract new businesses to the city of Maricopa. So they are away and calling in telephonically, so that we will have a quorum here tonight. Otherwise, it's just the three of us, and that's probably not a good idea. So anyways, we appreciate your patience with that. And to that end, we'd like to start by moving to the invocation, at which point Grady Root from the Maricopa Springs Church will offer the invocation, after which we're going to have a presentation of the colors, excuse me, by Maricopa High School Junior ROTC Honor Guard led by Cadet Brown. We will then have a singing of the National Anthem by Hope Pettigo, and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Bridger Kimball. And so if you'll all stand, and we'll follow to the program to that point. Grady?
I invite you to join me in a word of prayer. Lord Jesus, we thank you for this wonderful country that we are blessed to live in. We thank you for the freedoms that we experience here, and we pray for our city this evening. We ask first for those who are in positions of leadership in this city, for those who have power and influence and authority, God, that you would give them wisdom and integrity that they need to lead well. We pray for continued growth for Maricopa. We ask that you would bless this city with economic prosperity as it grows, that you would bring families and businesses here to meet the needs of this community. We pray there would be a community built on strong, right, and true values, that it would be filled with families and people who respect the beautiful diversity of your creation. And we ask that more people in this community would come to know the knowledge of the grace of Jesus. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You're welcome to join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you very much. I believe we have Vice Mayor Farrell and Councilmember Brown on the phone. And with that, we'll move to Vanessa for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
President.
Councilmember Chapados?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Councilmember Kimball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to move into item three, the Proclamations, Acknowledgements, and Awards. This is a presentation to honor the Maricopa Armed Services members returning home as part of Operation Welcome Home. And so we'd like to introduce Paul, who will carry us in the program from there.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tradition now in Maricopa is to hold our Operation Welcome Home ceremonies when we get wind that one of Maricopa's finest, one of the people from Maricopa has returned from deployment. And tonight, we are doing that tonight for another veteran or active service member coming here. This is very important for the community and for our sense of pride and our commitment to say thank you to those people who are serving our country. So, Mr. Mayor, if I could have you come down. And tonight, we are honoring Petty Officer Second Class Blaine Davis. If I can ask Petty Officer to come forward and meet the mayor out front here. And tonight, Councilmember Kimball is going to read the bio.
Petty Officer Second Class Blaine Davis has returned home from a three-year deployment in Japan. He was a machinist mate on the aircraft carrier USS George Washington. While aboard the George Washington, Petty Officer Davis was part of three humanitarian missions. Petty Officer Davis was born in 1991 in Tucson, Arizona. Blaine's move in 1996 to the Maricopa area predates the city's incorporation. He attended Maricopa Elementary School, Maricopa Middle School, and graduated from Maricopa High School in 2010. He left for boot camp in November of 2010. After graduating at the top of his class from A school, training in March 2011, he deployed to Japan with a recommendation for advancement to Petty Officer Third Class. Petty Officer Davis's Navy service comes from a legacy of sorts. His grandfather, great-grandfather, and three great uncles were sailors. Petty Officer Davis will return to Guam this Sunday. When asked, his mother says his decision to join the military was out of the blue, and like all moms, she was a little freaked out. It's with great honor, I say Petty Officer Second Class Blaine Davis, welcome home.
We have a little plaque that we would like to give Petty Officer Blaine Davis that says, "Be hereby known, the City of Council of, as part of the City of Maricopa's Operation Welcome Home, City of Maricopa is proud to recognize Petty Officer Second Class Blaine Davis on this the 20th day of May 2014, for a service to his country in the United States Navy and for a safe return to Maricopa from deployment in Japan." So again, welcome home.
And I think we have representative from our local veterans group that's going to come up.
I just wanted to say, welcome home. Good luck, everybody. That's good. And it's all going well. Remember us, because you're one of us. Thanks, everybody.
Welcome home. Thank you very much. This time, move on to item four, the report from the mayor. Just wanted to touch base real fast. There's a lot of things going on, but we'll save some of them for future meetings. At this time, we just wanted to let you know that we had the opportunity to go to Fire Dispatch that we share with several other jurisdictions in downtown Phoenix. Multiple cities utilize this. It was a fascinating opportunity to go and visit the dispatch because in that timeframe, I was able to learn about, you know, the positives and negatives of doing it by ourselves versus doing it with others. And the amount of money that Maricopa saves by doing it with a world-class, top-notch, state-of-the-art facility with lots of redundancy, something I guess I'd never thought about, how important it is to have redundancy in your computer systems and backups to people that know, and power generators, and all those different things, and so that you can protect people's lives if one of those systems goes down. And so, in order for us to be able to afford something like that would be astronomical in expense. And so, by sharing the burden and by participating with others, we really do save a whole lot of money and get a world-class experience at the same time. So, thank you for Fire for setting that up and letting us go and see that. It was an amazing education, so thank you. At this time, that concludes my report from the mayor. Again, just many thanks to Vice Mayor Farrell and Councilmember Brown, who are in ICSC. Again, just so you know, ICSC is not a vacation. It is a ton of walking. Imagine this building about 1,000 times over, and that's about the distance you travel every couple of minutes seemingly, as you walk from appointment to appointment. Our city manager, Rose, just flew back today to be with us here tonight at this meeting. But many thanks to them for doing that, because it is a lot of work, and so thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to the report from the city manager.
Honorable Mayor, I appreciate it. Thank you. Tonight, we have our interim IT director, Jean Martel, that will be introducing a couple of new employees.
Thank you, Manager Rose. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm pleased to come before you this evening to present two new employees to the city of Maricopa. I'd like to first start out with Tom Brandon. Tom, could you please stand? Tom serves the city in the capacity of network engineer. Tom brings to the city nearly 20 years of desktop server telephony and network systems experience. During his career, Tom has worked for Chase Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, UPS, and several other technology-related clients and customers. Tom first came to the city of Maricopa as a contractor in April of 2013. In just over a year, Tom has demonstrated beyond expectation a sincere dedication to serving the city, even after hours and on weekends. Tom was responsible for several high-profile projects here at the city, including the installation of the voice-over-IP telephone network at City Hall, PD, and Copper Sky. At the Copper Sky Multi-Generational Center, Tom was responsible for the design and implementation of the voice, data, and internet services, as well as the integration of vendor-specific equipment that utilizes the city network for maintenance and monitoring. Tom was also responsible for the coordination and installation of the compelling storage array at PD, as well as the recent upgrade to the city's storage array, which, by the way, staved off the storage saturation issue that we brought to you back in February, which has since been resolved. As you can see, Tom has and will continue to play a significant role in the implementation and support of critical services for the city. Last but not least, I know you will be pleased to know that Tom is a resident of the city of Maricopa. Please. So please join me in welcoming Tom to our team. Thank you. The next employee I'd like to introduce is Darren Pollack. Darren, please stand. Darren serves the city in the capacity of applications and workstation, workstation support specialist. Darren brings to the city 10 years of desktop, local area network, and application support experience, with six years of that experience coming from his work as contractor with Honeywell Corporation. Darren first came to the city of Maricopa as a contractor also, in July of 2013. During his 10 months here with the city, he has also demonstrated beyond expectation a sincere dedication to serving the needs of the city staff. Darren's duties include configuration, installation, and support of workstations, printers, the MUNIS system, the badging system, the shore telephone administration services, and a multitude of mobile device technologies, including voice and data components. Darren was also responsible for the research, selection, configuration, and installation of workstations, printers, and mobile devices for the Copper Sky recreational facility, as well as the initial setup of their membership tracking system. As you can see, Darren too has played a significant role in the day-to-day and strategic operations of the IT department. And although Darren is not a resident of Maricopa, Darren's commitment to our city is unwavering. He too has spent countless hours before, during, and after hours to ensure systems are running and the needs of the city staff are being met. Moreover, Darren has become the gauge, truly, he's become the gauge by which customer service is measured in our IT department. In fact, the admiration that city staff has for Darren and his work runs so deep, that had this appointment not been made, I'm certain that every city employee would have beaten down the door to my office demanding an explanation. I would have probably had slashed tires, too. So please join me in welcoming Darren Pollack to our team. Mr. Mayor and City Council, if I can indulge you just for one more moment, I'd like all three of the IT guys to stand up. They look great with ties, don't they? It's not what we normally see here. But anyway, I'd just like to recognize the fact that this is your IT team. We are fully staffed for this fiscal year. The staffing that we have is based upon the recommendations from the IT audit. Ultimately, there are other positions that we would like to fill going forward, though. We need to be sensitive to budget. We will work with that. But these guys are doing the job for you. I just want to recognize that.
Mayor, no additional items to report.
Thank you very much. We will move on then to item six. This time, this is the opportunity to call to the public. We'd welcome you up here. I have some speaker cards, not for call to the public, but for other items. We will get to those in their appropriate timeframe. But this is the time which you may approach the podium. You have three minutes to discuss whatever is on your mind with your city council. But just as a reminder, this is an opportunity to express to us what you're thinking about. But because it's not agendized, it's not something that the city council often offers a response to. But I'm sure if there's an issue, we can put you in contact with the appropriate staff or meet with you at a different time. So the floor is yours. And please state your name for the record.
My name is Wade Beckstead. Mr. Mayor, Council, I just wanted to introduce myself. I am one of the applicants for the open position on City Council. I'm really looking forward to this opportunity. My family's been here in Maricopa, coming up on nine years, and we love this community. We've seen a lot of people leave, and we're scratching our heads, wondering why. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the meeting next week for the interview process. I have a prior commitment with the Boy Scouts. We're going backpacking. We've been planning this trip since last year. I can't back out on them right now. I hope this doesn't have any impact on my application. I'm open to meeting with all of you, any of you, any other time after this meeting, or any time. Please give me a call. I look forward to this opportunity to give back and to serve Maricopa and to make a long-term viable economic community and a safe place that we all call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Nancy?
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Nancy Smith, and I live in Rancho El Dorado. I'm here tonight because, as a candidate, I've been doing a lot of walking and talking to people, which is actually a wonderful, wonderful experience. And I'm beginning to hear a repeating concern, and I actually ended up promising a couple gentlemen who are fathers at the park that I would come and at least make the city council aware of it. And I've also been doing some research with city staff and having conversations on this topic as well. And after I share with you what it is, I want you to also know I'd be happy to follow up with David Avilas on this subject as well. So what I'm finding is, as I'm speaking with people, fathers, mothers, who have children who want to come to the park, who want to grab their bats, their balls, their gloves, and they want to jump on a softball field, and they can't. And it's not because the field is being used. It's because they're not available, because they haven't paid their $5 to $15 rental fee. And so, I wasn't aware that the rental fee applied to when the fields were available and free. I raised two children who are athletes, went to the park all the time, played in Kiwanis softball fields, Chandler softball fields, and my children were raised basically at the ball field and improved their skills. And what I see as a problem is the fact that if a group of boys, a group of girls can't come to the ball fields and jump on those fields and play, then we're missing the mark to some degree. Now, in talking with the staff, I understand there are many different reasons for this, but I think what I'd like to see is if there's some kind of a balance where we have maybe one field at each location that's available for open play, particularly during the summer when kids might be wanting to impromptu come to the ball field and jump on those fields. And so, I think there's got to be some type of medium where we reach an agreement and there are some open times available, at least one field. So I wanted to share that, because I promised the parents I would, and I do believe it's a concern. We want our kids out there. We want them active and moving. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the call to the public and move on to the minutes. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes 7.1, 7.2, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we have no public hearings on item eight, so we'll move on to nine, which is the consent agenda. We have a request to a speaker card that lends to 9.3. So if it's okay with the council, we'll go ahead and poll 9.3, and that'll become the first part of the regular agenda. And that speaker is Nancy Smith, so we'll have you come forward, Nancy, on that, so you can ask your questions. With that, though, is there any other questions or concerns with consent? Didn't see any earlier, so can I have a motion to approve consent, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that moves us on to the regular agenda, and we'll move to first item 9.3. This is a resolution of the mayor and city council, the city of Maricopa, Arizona, establishing the salary of the mayor and city council members. This is for discussion and action. And Nancy, you are the one who had a speaker card, so if you please come forward and let us know what's on your mind.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for letting me speak again. This item, I know, is a small change, and I know that it was briefly mentioned during the budget review. And I also know that with a brief explanation, most residents would support it, as would I, because I know there's most likely a good explanation. But I feel whenever an agenda item benefits either any of City Council, mayor, vice mayor, that it should not be on consent agenda. You should jump at the chance to be fully transparent, discuss the item, and then vote on it. So that's basically my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any, I guess, you know, being that this is an item to which I did not participate in, in the discussions in BFO or in the actual budget, I would turn it over to any of my council members to lead this discussion, should you have any or questions or concerns or explanations. So I will step aside on this.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I sat on the, I'm on the BFO, and I sat in this meeting when we were discussing the particular change, and that particular change is moving the, taking the mayor's car allowance from $200 to $500. He was not involved in the discussions. It was just the BFO. One person's not here to talk about it, but either way. It was due to, when discussing it, we were thinking about, you know, everybody gets a certain allowance, and he's been driving all around the state of Arizona for months now, attending ADOT meetings, cars, you know, his car is going through a lot of abuse. He travels constantly, on a daily basis. He's at City Hall or at a meeting every time I call him, and I just, he puts in a lot more use on his vehicle due to the fact that we do not have in our budget to buy another city vehicle or a vehicle for the mayor or council members to use for that matter. So we decided that it would be good to bring it forward, to move it from 200 to 500. That was the justification that BFO had.
Councilmember Chapados?
As another member of the BFO, I also participated in this discussion, and I appreciate Mrs. Smith's comments about this being public and transparent. And one of the things that I find is that the policy of the city currently is the only time that we can put in for mileage is if we travel outside of Panal or Maricopa County. And obviously, with a lot of the stuff that the mayor has been doing, he remains within those two counties. But the other thing is just what Councilmember Kimball said, is the amount of time that our mayor is putting in to bringing recognition and opportunities to the city of Maricopa, at the personal expense of wear and tear on his vehicle, I just thought it was equitable to give him that much money. And I want you to know that there was no budgetary impact. We found money from another line item, so it's not increasing our budget at all. It's just we moved money to be able to do that for him. And to that, Mayor, I would like to move to approve 9.3.
Second.
So have a motion and a second, and just for the record, I won't participate in this vote. So, there's a motion and a second. Can I have, all in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? All in, motion carries. Appreciate it. Okay. That finalizes 9.3. We'll move on to item 10.1. The mayor and council should hear a presentation by Carl New on the visioning process. This is for discussion and direction.
Mayor, if I might, Mayor and Council, for introduction of Mr. New. Carl New has worked with more than 600 local agencies and has extensive experience in both governance and leadership, in both theory and practice. He's a teacher and a lecturer with the University of Colorado and a graduate of MIT and has an MBA from Harvard University. He has worked with me extensively on a visioning process for another city that I worked in and did a wonderful job for us. And my understanding that visioning document is still being used today. So it's without any hesitation that I introduce Mr. New for the presentation.
Thank you very much. I believe, Mayor and council members, you have materials that have been distributed to you. My name is Carl New. I'm from Lakewood, Colorado, and I will make this presentation. Got a bit of a cold, so I hope you'll forgive me. What I'd like to do tonight is to get you to think about the community visioning process. But first, I want to compliment you on your model up there, proud history and prosperous future. Because the visioning process that I want to discuss for a minute, basically, is all about the second half of that model. And that is, what is the future we desire and how do we go about achieving it? As a former council member myself, and working with councils around the country, I think one of the most important roles of a governing body is to think about and bring the community and bring, into engaging the public and the community into the process, of what is the future we desire as a community and how as a community will we achieve it. And so that's basically, I think your model is a very propitious one, and I compliment you for it. The community visioning process is also about what's known as strategic planning. And if you think about it for a second, every organization has a future. The question is then, what's going to be the quality of that future, and what do we do to determine that future? And I'll go through this quickly. I suspect all of you in this room at some time have daydreamed and think about things about the future. The mind, the human mind is a future-seeking organism, if you think about it for a moment. We spend a lot of time thinking about the future in our personal life. A lot of organizations do the same, and so do communities. I think if you go through Maricopa, you're going to find everybody has some idea, or most people will, about what they'd like to see the future of the community to be. to see the future of the community to be. The second thing is, is that this concept of advancing to the future, adventure, it is an adventuresome process, but basically then is how do we then advance to get to that future? And almost all communities that are involved in this process, these two factors are the driving force behind what they do. But first, you must be able to imagine what that future is that they desire. The German philosopher Goethe had a phrase that I really liked. He says, "If you can see it or dream it, do it. Boldness has magic power and genius in it." But one of the city managers that I had the pleasure of working with for years made the statement, "Carl, make sure that that dream is your dream, or otherwise you'll be a player in somebody else's dream." And that's the important thing. As a governing body, what is our dream in our community? What is our dream for our community so that as we go forward, all the various things that we have to decide, how does it fit into fulfilling that future that we desire? Concept of strategic leadership, basically, is define the future you want. I've already talked about that. And then invent the ways to make it happen. And that also becomes extremely critical. How many of us think about, for example, have things we wanted to do, but we've never gotten around to doing them because we haven't invented the ways to make them happen? I'm a classic example. I've been on a diet for 57 years. So as a result, one of the things that becomes important and also is to have, the ways that we bring into achieving the future are sustainable. And we already know now, many of the communities that are in trouble about that because they went into trying to pursue things to become a part of their future, but they were not sustainable, and now they're paying the price for it. The other thing is to display leadership, stewardship, and I'm going to talk about those in a minute, because they go together. Many things that leaders have dreamed up have not had sustainability, and they disappear. The stewardship factor becomes also a critical component. Leadership is about making things happen that might not otherwise happen. And as I got the pleasure today, thanks to the city manager of driving throughout your community, it's interesting to see Maricopa right now, because in many ways, it's like a wonderful canvas before an artist where much is still left to be painted. And so that becomes a part of the process. So what are those things that we want to make happen? And also, what are some of the things that may be out there that we do not want to see to be a part of our future? How do we deal with preventing those, and what would happen if we fail to act? But transforming that vision into reality is what's really important. And you have a tremendous opportunity here in Maricopa because you have so much of your community that is still out there to be determined what it will become over time. The next part of it, then, is that stewardship factor, ensuring the capacity and means necessary to sustain and preserve the future. If you go back in history, for example, you can think about the founding of our own nation. Leadership occurred in 1776. Within 10 years, states that already were starting to withdraw or planning to withdraw from the Union because it was a failure. Then came the factor of sustainability, that was the drafting of the US Constitution. And when the two came together, the rest then became history of our nation. The next thing is the needs of the future. Once you define the future that you want to perceive or achieve, that takes precedent over the demands of the present for mastering challenges we face, decision-making, and resource allocation. And that becomes extremely important, because you take a look at a lesson Congress hasn't learned yet, that one, is you spend all the resources now, the future has no capacity to be achieved except by happenstance. So what is the future we desire? And that becomes extremely important. And then how do we go about achieving it? And that's basically the whole concept of the strategic planning and community visioning process. Now, you're not unfamiliar with this. You have a very fine strategic planning process. And I know Brenda Fisher from previous contacts, and the plan that you have is a very good one, created by the city council as a leadership document that you bring from your perspective. The next part of this process, then, is to engage the community as to how they see it. Because you want to have the enthusiasm of the community and the support in advancing to the future. And that then becomes what I call a partnership, working together to develop a pathway to the future that we envision and want to have happen. Now, the city down in this other part of the state here, Sierra Vista, they call theirs their strategic leadership plan, very similar to yours, our future vistas. And in that plan, what they do is they define not only what their vision is, but then they also break it down into five and two-year cycles. And you've done that also in your plan. But this plan of the shorter period process links to the long-term vision. Where do we want the community to be, say, in the year 2040, for example, in discussion? And they have this now going on in their city, the concept there. I'd like to talk, just because of time, a little bit about the partnership process. What has to be done in terms of getting the process going, and how do we involve the community? One is to get the community to be involved, really talking about, thinking about, how do we see the future of the community, what is it we want to create, and what it is that we want to become as a part of that process? Everybody in this community, as I mentioned earlier, has great dreams about what they'd like to see it to be. So do all of you as elected officials. When I was on our city, in our city council, we spent a lot of time thinking about where are we taking our community as a newly formed community into the future. And we incorporated in 1969. The resulting strategic plan that does something else, and not only encompasses the vision, but it also helps define the partnerships that have to occur within a community. The city council is just one major player. There are many other players in the community, all of whom have to contribute to the outcome and bringing about not only a proud future, but a prosperous and exciting one. Now, looking forward for a few minutes, because your history is rather, really truly is an adventure. You've had many challenges, and you have many, many opportunities potentially ahead of you. Your rapid growth, if you stop and think about it, you're really still a nascent community in a lot of ways, in terms of your youth. Where do you go from here? Your size is very impressive, in terms of, especially the planning area that's around you. Because what can happen in a community is even though you may be relatively small in the incorporated area, if you have some influence over what happens around you, that then creates the stage that you have an integrated, greater community where all the parts are playing together for achieving the future. Now, I have here 10% developed, but I understand from today that's actually a low figure. But that leaves an awful lot out there that's still there. And you can still define what you want to have happen to it over time. But that also requires building into the community a strategic mindset. One of the people I had years ago that was a mentor came up with this statement that I liked there in the green. It says, "A strategic leader comes at you from the future and takes you back. But you must be able to understand that what is that future you're going back to." And so, and also, the second thing is that it has some components. And one of them is, we've always heard this term, getting up to the 30,000-foot level. What can happen very quickly in a community, and I know one from my experience, when a lot of people come in, they'll talk about immediate concerns. And those are legitimate. I'm not discounting them in any way. But when you're starting to plan about the future, you want to really get to a big-picture perspective. And the word strategic, basically, has to do with long-term, large-scale undertaking. It's basically the role of generals, if you go back into history. Generals do not fight wars. They plan campaigns to be fought on the ground by field officers. And so, a good example is General Eisenhower. He did not lead the invasion of Normandy, but he oversaw Project Overlord, Operation Overlord, which was the campaign carried out in the invasion of Normandy. The next one is the 10,000 feet, the tactical things. What are the goals? What are the strategies? What are the things that we have to do to achieve operational performance? And then, of course, down at the bottom is the grassroots, everyday life we go through. But as we go through our everyday life, what is important is to feel that we're enjoying the benefit of that planned future or planned future we're trying to achieve, so that it is an exciting, prosperous community that we enjoy not only living in, but hopefully would like to have others come and work here, play here, and become a part of your community as it grows. Now, the city manager mentioned this plan right here. You have copies of it. It just so happens he was involved in this plan because he was the city manager of North Las Vegas at that time. It's a very comprehensive plan. In this case, it started in 2003, went out to 2025. And this is the big blueprint. And then I mentioned Sierra Vista because then they take every five years and break the blueprint down into more actionable components as you move forward, so that you can do two things. Five years, why? Because most of our capital budgeting is done in five years. And if you're going to do a lot of things in the future, you're going to have heavy investments in things such as infrastructure and so on, we have to have a blueprint as to how we then do that. Two years is the time between elections. And so you have budget approvals that occur and operational activities that come into it. But you all have a copy of this document, and it's a good example of a visioning plan from a community. Now, there's some key factors. Number one is to invite the community and everybody in to become a participant in this process. That it's not just the city council, but it's a city council in partnership with the entire community. Where do we want to go together as a community and what we're trying to achieve? And if you notice the list that's in that document, that you'll find that there are hundreds of people that participated in that process. The next thing is encourage people to become truly involved in the process. And that means becoming not only sharing their ideas, but also working with others, which later we'll get into in terms of forming task forces and so on. What are the things that are really important to the future of the community? Linking the strategic plan then to the many partners. For example, it could be religious groups, educational groups, the business community, all the various groups, neighborhood groups. How do all these partners then contribute to the successful creation and implementation of the plan? And that becomes important because they have a stake then in what they saw and want to have happen, making it happen. It's a living document. It just isn't something that is drawn up once. It has to be kept current. Things change. New opportunities emerge, things you hadn't thought about. Tonight, I was just sitting here thinking about with the IT presentation, how many of you had a cell phone 20 years ago, et cetera? And so, stop and think about time that you go out long distance. There are going to be a lot of things that occur, and you have to keep the plan current. It also serves to define and achieve goals that the community holds collectively, and if they're willing to support. Because if they want a future, then how do they then help you bring it about? Invent the ways to make it happen. Now, some key elements. One is committing to the process. Two, whoops, this thing jumped ahead on me here. Let me get some, go back up. Here we go. Committing to the process, creating a steering committee. It's very important that even though it's sponsored by the council, that the process is being driven by community members also, so that it's a team of the community working together. That's the steering committee. Many, many forums, meetings with various groups, neighborhoods, business groups, religious groups. In your case, here you have the Native American populations and communities around you. How do you link with them? And so on, because they'll be partners also in what you're doing. And all of these forums take place, then, getting this public input, getting them to define what they want the future to be of the community, and what do they see to be the important elements? So that they start framing the network and the components that go into the strategic plan. The next thing that becomes important is project teams, once the vision elements have been defined. And you'll notice in all of the plans, and you also have many of yours here in Maricopa, that they're frequently relatively few in number, but they are extremely important strategically to the future of your community. I call those strategic focus areas. Sierra Vista says, "Those are the areas that define what is most important, where we must direct and utilize our resources, time, money, and talent for the future." The next thing it also does has specific goals, and what's the rationale behind those goals? Why do we have those goals? What do we expect to achieve from them? And it's strategies to make them happen. Drafting and adopting the strategic plan. The strategic plan is basically, if you'll think about it, very similar to the minutes of one of your meetings. It records what people thought and came up with and what present. But it really, what was really important was the mind process and the community involvement that was behind all that. And all that does is document the conclusions that the people come from, have developed. One, excuse me, is then adoption of the strategic plan. And I recommend to most city councils, they actually adopt it by ordinance or resolution. And the reason why is that it's a policy statement in terms of long-term commitment of the community. The next thing is communications and communications and communications. Constantly talking about the future of the community, constantly linking in all the decisions we make, how do they link back to fulfillment of the strategic plan? So that what we're doing is all putting in place through our actions, the critical elements of achieving that plan over time. The other thing that becomes extremely important is taking the plan into the community then for implementation, and making sure that there's continuous involvement in monitoring the implementation of the plan, in terms of that steering committee staying together. How are we doing? What needs to be done? And so on, on the plan. The next thing is keeping it vital, as I mentioned. I recommend that most strategic plans, particularly the implementation phases, be updated at least biannually. Things change. Resources can change. You know what's happened in the last few years in a lot of communities. Terms of economic conditions change dramatically, and now we're coming back out of that. Members of the city council can change, and so on. So how do we then keep those voices so that they also are being heard in the process? The other thing that's important, and you have it already, is a culture of strategic leadership and performance, that as a governing body and as a community, we always keep thinking about the long-term, big picture, what it is we're trying to achieve, and how do our incremental actions then link to and have bases from what it is that they contribute to that accomplishment that we set out to do. And that then, basically, in a nutshell, is the process of the strategic planning process. And a typical, the appendices that are there, you'll see an outline of a typical outline of the schedule for a strategic planning process, the work that has to go in from the city's involvement, the work goes in from the consulting involvement, and a typical outline of what a budget might look like for the creation of that plan, in terms of consulting services and so on. So because of time constraints, I'll go ahead and stop and answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, questions? Yes, did someone address me? I apologize if I missed it.
Excuse me?
Any questions, counsel? Vice Mayor Farrell, Councilman Brown?
No, I don't have any questions. And I'm looking forward to your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counselman Chapadus.
Mr. New, thank you. This is a subject near and dear to my heart, so thank you very much for these ideas. And city manager, thanks for bringing this forward. With a city our size, do you see any, anything that would be unique to us, being so young in this planning session, as either an advantage or possibly disadvantage?
Yes, the, I think the uniqueness, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier, and I'll come back to it, is that your community is young. And that gives you a sense of, just driving through here, and there's so much out there yet, that whole planning area, that has not yet been defined for what the future of it might be, that we want to work together. And that, to me, is part of the excitement of this kind of process. Because I mentioned earlier, it's like an artist having a thought about where you want to go, and all of a sudden, you've got this blank canvas, and you can start to define it. And what's nice about it is that a lot of it is, the opportunity is there without having to undo things that have been there in the past. My community is a classic example of that right now. Out of 45 square miles of land, we have exactly four miles, four acres of undeveloped land. Okay? And it's not used for public purposes and so on. So our whole future now is having to redevelop. But right now, you're actually creating what the future of this community will be, let's say, over the next 20 or 25 years. First, define it like you would if you had a blueprint for a house you were going to build, and then constructively work to bring that about. So when you get to the year, let's say, 2040, you can drive through this community and say, "We all did a great job. We really love this community," rather than going through the community and have somebody say, "If only they had," you know, and certainly we've done something. But to me, the excitement of what I saw here today was that you've done a lot of things already. This building right here is a good example of that. I was really impressed when I drove up here this morning. And secondly, its location is exciting, because to me, it has, to me, it's almost like seed corn. It's waiting to grow all around you as to what the future of your community could be. So I think there's a great deal of excitement here because of the fact that you are in the adventure of really moving through the maturing of what you want your community to be, and in getting the community engaged in it now, so that they can become a part of that process also.
Question for the city manager. Do you have a projected timetable as to when you'd like to see this process started, if we approve it?
Mr. New and I will have a discussion if the city council decides to, mayor and council decide to move forward with the visioning process about that timeline, and we'll provide you with a rough schedule. This will be the major project that the assistant to the city manager will be working on, which, as you know, I'm in the process of trying to bring on board.
And do you have any idea how long the process might take?
Each community is different, and we try to work very hard to make sure that we get all different sections of the community involved. It can take It can take, and I will let Mr. New respond to that since he's worked with many more cities than what I have.
Yeah, for one of the type that, that he's talking about, which is similar to the North Las Vegas effort, it's about four months to get it done. Because you really want to get out into the communities and spend time. And then also, when the feedback comes from all of those community forums, what are the things that we're hearing? And that's where the steering committee becomes extremely important. And then task forces, teams get put together. We've defined them out of here. What do the people see are the critical factors to our future? How do we then want to define goals around those as to how we will manage those strategic focus areas into the future? So there's a lot of involvement and there are several layers of that involvement. General input, the oversight of it from the steering committee, and then also having citizens involved in, okay, how are we going to make it happen? What are the things that we have to do to make sure that this vision is going to become a reality because of the things we put in place that are the guidelines to bring it about? That's about four, four months is a typical number.
If I could also add on to Mr. New's comments, the conclusion of the visioning process is really just the beginning. And then we'll sit down, myself and the executive team with the mayor and council and decide on what do we do first? And try to put together that strategy and then begin working on working plans for a, for the fiscal year so that everyone's clear as to the direction that the city is headed and how we intend to get there and the timeline that we intend to get there in.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Just wanted to let you know that I worked this, I think you said forward, forward. It's five, would you like to correct, Carl, move and that? We're a new community, and that is a false statement. We are a new city of just ten years, but we're a community of over a hundred years. And we've been a community that has always thrived in community. And he mentioned that logo and that brand that he was impressed with, that's where the proud history comes from. And I look forward to moving forward and keeping that community present in Maricopa.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Can I speak to that just for a second?
Yes.
I compliment you on that because you're absolutely right. The proud history is something that you have, and I apologize for not being more clear about that because your history goes back much more in terms of the contribution to this community before the incorporation. And that statement was made very well, and it's a tremendous asset for this whole process.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown, do you have any thoughts or concerns?
No, I have nothing to add. I was listening to the City Manager, Rose, and what he suggested in terms of his executive team and being with us to figure where we go to be here if we indeed do implement it.
Thank you, sir. I guess the question I have is, first off, is that this, this act, this item is for discussion and direction. It's not for discussion and action tonight. So it's basically giving direction so that it will be brought back again for, as it will have a budgetary impact, and that's not obviously listed here in the current line item, or agenda item, excuse me. But that being said, I mean, I guess the question I have for the council is, I see the wisdom in this and the, and the value in this. There is a budgetary impact and, you know, it is, it is an investment in ourselves. And so I guess I ask the council if that's an investment that they see worthy of this and would just pose that question to them so that we can give the City Manager direction to bring this back so that we can make a final decision on it. So I guess I pose that to the, to the council. Councilmember Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I do think that we should look forward and, and I had spoke to the City Manager before the meeting and asked if he was the one that brought this forward because he thought it would be a good thing for us to hear about and potentially a good idea for us to move forward with. So I would say yes, I would support moving forward with it, obviously given the budget when, when it comes back to us for approval.
Thank you. Councilman Chapados.
I would echo those sentiments. My only concern is this is, if this is something that you're going to have the assistant to the City Manager be one of their responsibilities, I'd like to get that person on board and kind of settled in, and I'd like to wait until at least the first part of next calendar year so we know what's going to happen with council members and we start fresh.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
I have no comment, this is Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Farrell?
You know, I have no comment, and I'm keen to get this started with or without a campaign and elections coming forward. I think this is, this is important for our city and important for our entity, and I support it.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, well, I think the time is a little bit up in the air as far as, we haven't discussed that in detail with the council members. However, there's direction here to move forward and to bring this back before us. So thank you very much.
Thank you for this opportunity, and I apologize for the cold.
Thank you, Carl. We appreciate it. Thank you, City Manager. All right. That leads us on to item 10.2. This is, "Mayor and City Council Discuss the Possibly Take Action on the City of Maricopa Nonprofit Funding Program Applicants and Evaluation Results and Make a Recommendation for the Funding Consistent with the Formal Adoption of the Fiscal Year 14-15 Budget Under General Government Program Awards." This time, Mary is going to introduce this. I also have a speaker card for Courtney. Courtney, we'll, go ahead and let Mary present, and then if you would like to come up after she presents, we'll have you speak to the item before the council takes any action. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I come before you tonight with recommendations of award for the Maricopa Nonprofit Funding Program. In September of 2013, the mayor and city council approved changes to the program, and this is the first round of applications with the new changes. As directed, a citizen evaluation team was created prior to the release of the request for proposals. I do thank the citizens for their service. This year, the city received four qualifying applications. Applications were received from the Maricopa Community Alliance Against Substance Abuse, the Alzheimer's Association Desert Southwest Chapter, Environmental Concerns, and Barcelona Maricopa. The total funding request with the four applications was eighty-two thousand five hundred. Through the evaluation process, as presented in the staff report, a total of one thousand one hundred points could be awarded per application. The Maricopa Community Alliance Against Substance Abuse received one thousand fifty-nine points, and they're requesting twenty-five thousand dollars. Environmental Concerns organization received nine hundred and eighty-nine point eight points, and they are requesting twenty-five thousand. The Alzheimer's Association Desert Southwest Chapter scored nine hundred and sixty-three points, and they are requesting seven thousand five hundred dollars. Barcelona Maricopa scored eight hundred and twenty-seven points, and they are requesting twenty-five thousand. The citizen evaluation team through this process is recommending reduced funding for Barcelona Maricopa in the amount of five thousand dollars due to concerns with the application and seeing the need, the cost per child, no letter of support from the city, concerns with an unrealistic budget, and mention of applying to build a reserve fund.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. Courtney, would you like to come and speak to the item, please? Thank you. Please introduce us.
Members of the council, Mayor, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Courtney Kellners. I'm a high school biology teacher at Maricopa High School, founder of Maricopa Student Travel Organization, and boys varsity soccer coach at the high school as well as a resident. And I wanted the opportunity today to speak briefly about the concerns that the committee had with our application for funding, just to, you know, see if there was, because I felt like they were easily addressed. And so I gave, you have folders in front of you with a few items inside that will give you bullet points in, you know, what I'm about to talk about as well as some reference materials as well. I started this club at, as the Maricopa High School Soccer Coach because I saw most of my players coming to me at the high school lacking the skills, drive, and most cases the academics necessary to pursue soccer at a higher level. So the intention of this club was to provide a year-round opportunity for them to play at affordable rates where they were competing at a higher level and receiving a higher level of training year-round so that they could achieve those college goals. In this effort, my club has actually grown tremendously. We've started to incorporate more youth in town, and we consistently strive for excellence in this area. Our mission focuses around the providing opportunities for athletes to play the sport that they love in college. So my full intention is to push them towards that dream. So as a teacher, I push the academics. As a coach, I allow sport to be the vehicle in which they achieve that dream. We, in the process, we've started, we started a development program that focuses on the technical aspects of the game, and we brought in a world-class trainer in order to provide training that cannot be found, you know, anywhere within this, you know, county realistically. And so we are beginning to develop a transitional program that's going to create a successful competitive environment that hopefully will push players to both challenge themselves and each other while developing very beneficial personal skills. So the whole point is I wanted to discuss each of the committee's concerns in order to make sure that, you know, we understand exactly where we're coming from. I recently applied for the nonprofit funding and requested twenty-five thousand, and we were recommended to receive five thousand by the committee members. We appreciate the existence of this program, and any dollar amount is greatly, you know, accepted and beneficial. So, you know, no matter what the, you know, amount or however you decide, we are going to be, you know, extremely grateful. In the folder, you can see, you know, the bullet points on the different things. So the first is they have the difficulty seeing the ability to reach every child. I can tell you that the money will be spent on the benefit of every single kid, no matter what, in developing a program that guides them in that direction towards college. The cost per child, I included in the folder a comparison list of costs of other clubs that are similar within the surrounding areas, both within Awatuki as well as in Chandler. And if you were to break down the costs, we are significantly cheaper as far as the program is concerned. So that's a, you know, simple comparison right there. And then I will continue to talk about the cost per child as we get into the other concerns as well. The other one was the lack of letter of support from the city. I had met with the city previously. I'd met with David Aviles and Travis and discussed my intentions as a club and the things that I wanted to do to bring to the city in order to develop the youth programs to provide coach and ref education that would help both my program and the city programs. And they are very aware. However, they did not want to form any type of formal commitments or partnership with my club just because there are a couple other organizations in town, and they wanted to make sure that they, you know, maintained unbiased, you know, procedures. So I didn't pursue the letter for that reason. The last concerns are regarding the budget and the idea to build a reserve fund. The committee thought that our budget was not realistic, but this really goes back to the cost per child. If you look at the outline budget in your folder, the line items one through seven that I labeled are all expenses that we have to pay to run this organization. Those costs from one through seven total over fifty thousand dollars. The field expenses alone, just for our practice fields and our games, total about twenty-four thousand dollars. So those costs just by themselves, you know, justify, you know, the expenditure. We also have to pay for referees. We have to pay for travel costs, tournament fees, uniforms, league registration fees. There's lots of different operating costs that you'll see in that budget item as well. So the goal is to use that twenty-five thousand dollars to cut as many of those costs as possible so that we can offer scholarships to our players that will help cut the costs. We set the price high with the, that way it matches the expectations in the competitive level, and then we open to scholarship applications. This last year, we were able to award ten thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars in scholarship money that we received from outside funding. And then we also awarded twelve thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars in scholarship money that was from internal funding, basically, you know, that we were able to move money around and help families out. So right there, that's over twenty-two thousand dollars in scholarship money that we were able to give to fill that. Now, this was only able to happen because we were able to not pay our coaches this year. And the goal is to pay the coaches in order to create a professional environment that creates professional expectations and raises our students and our athletes to behave like professionals. And so we want to maintain that standard. And so the funding that would be provided would allow us to help compensate some of the other operating expenses and, you know, the budgetary requirements so that we can create that environment and maintain those high expectations. And then any money that was brought in through membership dues, we would like to, just like any business, build a, you know, financial operating fund that we would be able to have for any type of, you know, emergencies that come up. It's just for the health of our club, basically. So reserve fund probably was the incorrect word. I probably should have called it operational fund. So that was just to address the reserve fund. So my customers are, they're youth soccer players that love to play soccer, many of which dream of playing college or professional soccer. If you go and talk to most of my kids out there at ten, eleven, that's exactly what they'll tell you, is that they want to be professionals or college players. My goal is to keep that dream alive as possible by teaching them the proper things, all the proper techniques and all the proper etiquette, as well as pushing them to compete with themselves. And in order to do that, I have to hire professional coaches. It's just something that's absolutely mandatory in order to achieve those goals, you know, in the right way. I'm doing this because this is a passion of mine and I love it, and I also see the potential, you know, within Maricopa to grow. In 2040, I would like to see college coaches coming to Maricopa to find soccer players and then having the academics to earn scholarships on top of that. You know, that's my strategic plan as far as soccer goes. So that's my vision is to really push that. I want to be the Mecca for college coaches. And your financing, your additional support of my club will help me achieve this dream and will really push us in the right direction. And so basically, this is why I would like you to just consider those, those items that I gave you in the folder. And if there's anything that you are willing to do, it's greatly appreciated. If you recommend the minimum, as the committee did, then of course, you know, every dollar helps us, you know, achieve that goal. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Courtney. I do have a question for you. So you mentioned, as I look at this budget, and as I look at some of the expenses and expenditures needed to run, you know, the idea of what you're trying to accomplish. You know, you said, you said earlier in your conversation, you showed a total of fifty thousand. And so, you know, what happens if you don't come up with that money? What happens if the council says five for you today? Certainly, it is appreciated and we respect that and thank you for that, but at the same time, you know, where do you make up the difference?
Well, we made up the difference this last year because we weren't able to collect it all. We went through the Pinal County Rico Fund, and we were able to secure six thousand dollars there. Walmart was able to give us a thousand dollars. We held another fundraiser that was able to bring in like about three thousand, I believe. And then, you know, we're constantly seeking outside donors. We really made up the lack because if you look in the first column where it was requested from the city, the wages, that fifteen thousand dollars, that's very, very minimal as far as soccer coaches are concerned in the professional world. That fifteen thousand dollars was basically sacrificed because the coaches were committing a lot of their own time. I personally hired a lot of the soccer players to do yard work and, you know, move people and things in order to help them pay for their fees. We had other coaches that were kind of doing the same thing. And, you know, we really kind of had to work it around and, you know, kind of go that way, but lots of fundraisers and lots of, you know, outside effort.
The other question I have for you is, you know, regardless of what council does, but let's say they, they did give you the twenty-five thousand. Again, part of the revamping of this process was that it was to help jumpstart things but not to create a longevity of expecting from the city, but rather, again, just a, a jumpstart to help. And after, you know, one or two applications, it's no longer, there has to be a time off period. So I'm, I'm just thinking forward into the future, you know, is this, is this program going to be able to survive, you know, two years, three years? Because obviously what you're trying to accomplish is make this a soccer Mecca, which I love, but at the same time, you know, without funding two years down the road, or let's say you get, you know, twenty-five thousand this year and you apply again next year, in the third year, are you going to be able to survive? I guess is the question.
Right. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there are, there are several, you know, steps into, you know, making that success, and like you said, this is a Kickstarter. So that was really the intention behind the reserve fund comment is because we want to build up that operational fund where we're able to basically front money at the beginning of the year, and then we can kind of earn throughout each year in order to do that. Now, the goal is, and this can be seen through many organizations, you know, similar to mine, is we want the fees to be not minimal but affordable. So we want it to be a commitment. And as we raise commitment, we raise expectations, then people will start to rise to that expectation. And as we're able to get more and more people to rise to the expectation year after year, we'll see the continued success of the program. You know, because you can look around and there are soccer clubs that fail throughout the valley, and there are soccer clubs that are extremely successful. And I think it really depends on the expectation. So, you know, the goal is that we become known as a professional organization who breeds great soccer players and good people, and then people want to be a part of that. And once we have that and people want to be a part of it, then maintaining the funds will be significantly less difficult.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions or concerns of? Thank you. Counsel, other questions or concerns of Mr. Courtney? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Well, counsel, this is a time for your discussion on this item. You have the list before you. Really, the only thing seeming to be in question is this particular soccer club. If you decide to move forward on the others, how do you prefer to go? What would you like to do? Vice Mayor Farrell, Councilmember Brown, any thoughts or concerns, questions?
I truly cannot support funding these youngsters in soccer beyond $5,000. I applaud their efforts, and certainly soccer is kind of a very popular game in the United States. I had the pleasure years ago watching films of the great Brazilian player, Hélio, and certainly a great exercise he did. And I think we all look forward to 2040, seeing the youngsters gaining chests. But at this point, I cannot afford support beyond $5,000 for that effort.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Vice Mayor Farrell?
I...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
I did not...
I think you said, "I will support that." I'm sorry, we were having some technical difficulties there.
I did, word count...
I'll text you. Thank you. We'll get the answer from you straight, I promise, and let everybody know. Councilmember Kimball, Councilwoman Chapados?
Well, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect to the citizen committee that did the evaluations, and thank you, Courtney, for coming and giving answers to their questions or whatnot. But it seems as though, in looking over their application, that Barcelona met all the qualifications or standards that we asked of these organizations when they came to us and submitted their applications requesting funding. And given his responses to the concerns, and looking at his budget, and looking at the membership fees that were not collected, I feel as though that we could, I would support funding it fully for the $25,000.
Thank you. Councilman Chapados?
First of all, I want to thank the Citizen Review Committee. I know that they put a lot of time and effort into reviewing these applications. Also, thank you to Courtney for supplying us with those answers tonight. I can see the value in if these are truly startup costs. I know the majority of the money that you're asking for from the nonprofit funding program is going to cover salaries. And that is a continuing cost. It's not a one-time startup cost. So, I'm a little bit concerned there as to where you're going to make that up. Based on the comments that you made, is that going to compromise the quality of staffing that you're going to be able to acquire if you can't maintain those salaries over time? The other concern I have is, is that not having read in as much detail as our Citizen Review Committee, that was one of the reasons that I think, I know for me personally, that was a big consideration in appointing a citizen committee, is for them to vet that process and to make those recommendations to council. I'm not totally comfortable funding them at the $25,000 level, but I'm wondering if there's room for maybe $7,500, $10,000, just looking at the line items, just to cover some of those costs that he needs to do to get this up and running. One of the things we said, and Courtney said it as well, it's made to be a startup fund. And if you can sustain that over three years, and they can build up a reserve, I think this is a good first step. $5,000, based on what he needs to do and what resources he's got to do it with, is only going to get him so far. And based on what he said for his long-term goals, I would feel comfortable coming back at maybe $10,000.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chapados. Just for the record, Vice Mayor Farrell threw text, and our city clerk says he supports Brown's comments. So, just wanted to let you know. Thank you, Vice Mayor Farrell. You know, I've had a hard time with this for a variety of reasons. And the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, every dollar is important to the taxpayers of this city, and it's something that, as I said in the Budget Finance and Operations Committee, we scrutinize every single line item, every single budget. But we do have this program in place for a reason. It's to help our citizens accomplish things that they probably wouldn't be able to do by themselves. And I think that sometimes we get into the semantics of where the money is going. However, it's important. I don't think that we should, you know, toss the baby out with the bathwater there. I think that, I think that sometimes, you know, we need to know where that money is going, and it is important. But at the same time, you know, the original policy or city code here is, our policy is a percentage of the total amount of the city budget. And that being said, this year, we drastically reduced it, and we were lucky or unlucky, depending on how you look at it, to receive not very many applications. And therefore, we were able to absorb that loss, if you will. Even if we funded everything fully, we still are saving a large amount of money that is staying inside the general fund and helping to balance the budget, which is, which is a wonderful opportunity. And it's not because we were having to say no to people, but rather because they simply, the applications weren't there. And so, I think that this decision would be a lot harder if that was the case. That being said, you know, again, scrutinizing things, if the idea is to get it off the ground, then, you know, whether, whether it's going into the general pot of the money that he's saying is being utilized for wages, or whether it's being utilized on a per-kid basis for uniforms, if it's one giant plot, it's kind of irrespective of where it comes from, as long as the money is there to accomplish the act which he's trying to do, which is create this particular program. And we look at these other programs, the Alzheimer Association Desert Southwest Chapter. We look at ECO, who we all are very familiar with. We know that goes to pay for wages. Maricopa Community Alliance Against Substance Abuse. And so, you know, those have different things that they pay teachers for, for their things. And yet, I'm not sure that it's fair to single out this particular applicant, considering the explanations that have gone forward, depending on and basing it upon those rationales. So, it's not to say that I disagree with my counterparts, but I think that either we can find a middle ground, or, in my personal opinion, I think that I don't have a problem in this particular instance, in this particular moment, with this application, of seeing it at a full fund. This is not like it's the third year in a row that this has come back, and that, you know, this application has been under much discussion and scrutiny. So, I have no problem with a first year. That's the whole reason we offer these things. And it's the whole reason we revamped this program in the first place, was to give people a chance to start something new. So, it wasn't going to the same people over and over again. So, in that response, and in that respect, I have no problem funding it at 25. If that's not the council's wishes, then I'm willing to compromise, and we'll find a middle ground. But I think that the closer we are to 25, in my personal opinion, I think that that goes along with the spirit of what we were trying to accomplish. But those are my two cents. Councilwoman Chapados?
Just a quick question. Courtney, when did you become a nonprofit?
Um, I became a nonprofit when I started offering it to my high school boys, and they expanded into...
Courtney, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you come up to the microphone? We have council members that might not be able to hear that explanation. So, please explain that again.
Yep. I'm sorry. We became a nonprofit when we joined with the nonprofit soccer club out of Mesa, Arizona, and went under their insurance and everything. And then, I started the club two years ago with just my high school boys. And then, through demand in our youth camps that we were providing to the citizens, we began last year operating at a younger level. And then this year, we're actually going to an even younger level.
So, with that partnership with the club out of Mesa, is it two separate budgets? Do you get funding from them at all, or your expenses are yours and yours alone?
Yeah. We actually pay them affiliation fees. So, it's completely separate funding.
Are there plans for you to become an independent nonprofit of your own at some point?
Well, there's benefits with us being with them. We actually hold an official affiliation with Barcelona out of Spain, and then at a national club level, which will put our kids on a more national stage, which actually helps accomplish that goal of, you know, appealing to more college coaches.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Well, counsel, we need to come sort of, I think we're in agreeance of the other ones. I haven't heard anything from any council members regarding the other applicants. So, really, we're just hashing this one out. So, if we want to talk a little further about it, or if we're all positioned, then we need to find a way to figure this out. Thoughts?
I'll just, Mr. Mayor, I'll just reiterate what I'd said before. I feel as though, in reviewing their application, that they met all the parameters that were required. And I think council's main goal of what we expected of and requested of the nonprofits that applied for funding, and given that there's only four, we did save, I'll reiterate what you had said, we did save a whole bunch of money in the budget since four applied. So, again, I'm in support of funding them fully. If there's a compromise, I would rather have it, I'd rather compromise at a higher level, not $10,000, but more like $15,000 or something like that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Kimball. Councilwoman Chapados?
Thank you, Councilmember Kimball. Given those comments, and given what I see that you're trying to do to build this, and again, for me, it all goes back to the purpose of having this program in the first place, is to get, give nonprofits a chance to start up and then become sustainable. So, I think I'm going to change my mind and say that I would support funding them at the full amount requested as well.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I hope you do your duty.
A little bit better, yes.
Under advisation, have they verified that they are a nonprofit organization?
The discussion was, the question is, is have you verified that you're a nonprofit
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, they did provide an IRS determination letter designating them as nonprofit.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, does that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Brown, are you set on your $5,000, or is there further discussion or thoughts from you, either of you?
Well, I listened to Councilmember Kimball and the council lady Chapados' decision, $25,000. Of course, in Europe, always excellent reasoning to why you want to support $25,000. I'm not going to go $25,000.
Okay. Is there a number that you...
I'm not either, but I'd be willing to talk about a compromise like you mentioned there and go with the $10,000 to $15,000.
So, it's either, so it seems like, based on the discussion thus far, it's either 25 or 15 on a compromised fashion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I would move, make it, I would, I move to make it a compromise in that we need that $15,000 and not $25,000 and not $25,000, but beat them at the $15,000, at the $15,000 deficit.
Okay.
I would...
So, there's a motion and a second on the table.
Mr. Mayor, we also need approvals for all the other four.
Correct, correct. And just, Vice Mayor, would you amend your motion to include the other three as well?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown, would you second that amendment?
Yes, yes, I, I, I'd sort of be able to.
Thank you very much. So, the motion on the table is to pass the other three and then compromise at 15, because, just don't know where everyone stands. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to do a roll call on this, please.
I need a second.
I'm sorry?
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapados?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for explanation. Okay. That moves us on to item 10.3. Thank you very much for your participation. Item 10.3, Mayor City Council shall discuss and possibly take action on approval of master planning and marketing agreement with the Boyer Company for the planning, design, marketing, and disposition of future development of land within the Australian Gen Business Park for light industrial, flex, and office-based purposes. This is for discussion and action. MICA. And we also do have a speaker card, Henry Wade. If you'd like to ask your question after MICA presents, that would be great. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to bring this before you tonight, and I'm glad, actually, I got to go after Mr. New. He wrote down, he mentioned something in his presentation, actually wrote down, and it was transforming vision into reality. When the city kicked off the business feasibility study and subsequent RFI and RSOQ for the development of the Australian Gen Business Park, it really was a vision of the city council and community members who came together to identify what we wanted to do with this land. So, that was back in 2012. And where we are today, we've gone through numerous rounds of negotiations, working to find a developer, the Boyer Company out of Salt Lake City. We've had an opportunity to have the mayor and interim city manager Sorenson go up there and meet with their representatives, tour some of their facilities, to get perspective on what they're bringing to Maricopa and what we're getting. Little history about the site, it was originally purchased to house the city's public works and fleet maintenance facility. Obviously, we didn't need all 52 acres. City council began to look at other options, and they said, "Make economic development happen." And one of the things that city council and members of the community have had heard for the past, I don't know, two years for me and previous economic development directors, is the need for leasable building products. So, what we went out and did is issued an RFI, request for information, to the development community to get their perspective on what could happen with this property. We used that information, we bundled it up, and went out and did an RSOQ. We landed on negotiation with the Boyer Company. Have gone through, like I said, numerous iterations. And what we have before you is a plan to get the Australian Gen Business Park up and running, marketed, so we can begin to cite some of our business leads in Maricopa and help retain our existing businesses. So, with that, I'm open to any questions you may have regarding the contract.
Thank you very much, MICA. We'll have Henry come up and speak to the item first. Thank you, Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Actually, I had posed this question to MICA earlier. I didn't want to blindside him or anything with the question I have. And he answered the question, but I thought I would pose it for the record. And it relates to Section 2, the lease or ownership of the property. And it gives a figure, a purchase figure of 75 cents a square foot on a $39,000, excuse me, a $39,000 square foot property. And I was curious as to where, as an appraiser myself, I was curious as to where they came up with 75 cents a square foot. He answered the question in reference that it did come from the appraisal. It seems to me that that was extremely low. When you're looking at $39,000 square foot property, $29,250 for a $39,000 square foot property, this seemed a little low when I looked at it. And the only other thing, though, that I had pause on is, it does provide a provision for Boyer to terminate the contractual agreement if they choose to do so within 90 days. I didn't see anything in the agreement, or the management agreement, where the city had the same option to be able to turn. So, maybe I just missed that part of it. So, it wasn't there. It didn't exist. Just those two items.
Thank you very much. MICA, would you like to speak on those, please?
Mayor, council, per Mr. Wade's question, part of our due diligence when we went out to do the RSOQ was to establish fair market value for the property. We did retain the services of an appraisal company, and they did provide a per-square-foot value of 62 cents. So, the 75 cents quoted is an increase over what was provided by the appraisal. Regarding the termination of the contract, obviously, they can cancel it. If they do cancel it, what we negotiated is that we retain the rights to every piece of material that they've created. So, working with their architects, working with their civil engineers, working with, anything they put in paper belongs to us. So, that was the trade-off. Obviously, we don't anticipate any termination of contract. But then today, if they do decide to walk away, we derive value from that.
Thank you. To answer your questions, Mr. Wade, thank you.
Thank you.
I, for one, am very excited about this project. I had the opportunity to fly to Salt Lake and into Orem. I had the opportunity to fly to Salt Lake and into Orem, where we were able to inspect what is known as Flex Base, and, you know, from the beginning of my tenure here on this board, or council, one of the things that has been really important is that, you know, there's a lot of people in this place that want to start up businesses or have businesses, and there's no place to move to. They can't afford the retail space that's along the 347, it's just too darn expensive. I remember a card shop that used to be there, and, you know, I'm not sure how you'd sell enough greeting cards throughout the holidays of this year and still feed your family, and, you know, bravo for them for trying. But, but the fact of the matter is, is now we're talking about building something that can be rebuilt internally, and, you know, we have a company that, that once this is, this space is built and filled, it lends to the business park, and it becomes that seed, as Carl had said earlier, that spreads from there, and, you know, it's basically custom-built to, to the business. When we saw some of these Flex Spaces, we saw them with bike shops right next to, you know, children's playgrounds, right next to Home Depot call centers, right next to a place that had both retail frontage, a distribution on Amazon, and in the middle, you know, basically a fulfillment center. And so you had this ability to change this locale, and I just think that it's something that Maricopa desperately needs, and I'd like to see it go forward, and I think that now that we, we have an interested party ready to go with Boyer and this contract, I certainly would like to see it, and I see it as an opportunity to help drive the competition in Maricopa, so that, you know, supply and demand dictates that as long as the high rates rule, there's no place else to go. But if you build someplace new on a cheaper scale, then it creates competition and thereby either drives prices down or to a new competitive market, or at least provides additional space for people to go and open their shops, their businesses, create, and eventually even move some of the spaces and spots that we've created, this whole business incubator for, so that you have a place to move into, because most of them, as small businesses, simply can't move into a frontage retail spot. And so it's something that I'm very, very excited about, and I've been working very hard towards, and I'd like to see that this happens. So that's my two cents, and I would accept a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
A quick question.
Yes, sir.
We started buying land at the city six, seven years ago. I was under the impression as a council member that once you buy land, in order to sell it, you can't sell the land unless it goes in front of the voters of your city, and your constituents decide whether or not that land is going to be sold. However, I'm hearing a different story now, and that's not the case. Can, can legal, please, let us know what that's true, what, 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 going forward with that, what, what is the true story on that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, that's actually addressed in the contract right now. There is a price limit of $500,000. The way we see this project going forward and the way it'll be built out, we don't anticipate ever getting to that point, but it does say in the current contract that both parties agree that that statute will be complied with. So if they come in and they wanted to buy the whole thing immediately and it reached that 500,000, it would have to go to the voters.
So if there's land that the city owns under the price tag of $500,000, the council can make the decision to sell it, but if it's over $500,000, it has to go to the public for a vote, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Does that answer your question, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
You fuzzed out there at the end, after you said yes. Could you repeat that, please?
I wrote, is, we can't get the next one. It's long 5,000, but the longest purchase is under 5,000. And it can be, that's a decision that the council is telling. If it's over 5,000, it has to the public for a vote.
Yes, that's correct. Okay? You're welcome. Yes, Councilmember Kimball.
Move to approve, 10.3.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on this, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 10.4, the mayor and city council discussed possibly take action on proposal to implement community services facility rental fees for nonprofit organizations, this item is for discussion and action. Ms. Hensley.
Mayor and council members, this evening, I have a nonprofit recreation rental fee proposal in front of you. This would implement fees for facility rental for nonprofit organizations. Currently, there are no nonprofit rates, we only have rates for residents and non-residents. So, and we do regularly get requests from nonprofits to use our facilities. The way those are handled right now is that when a nonprofit comes in and wants to rent a facility, it depends on the address of the nonprofit as to whether they pay the resident rate or the non-resident rate, and that's how the fee is determined for the nonprofit at this time. Five local jurisdictions were contacted for best practices and, on this particular item, and two of those jurisdictions, like Maricopa currently, do not have any nonprofit rate. They only have resident or non-resident or other types of rates. However, three of the jurisdictions we contacted charged non-residents, this, excuse me, charged nonprofits the same as they do a resident, so resident rates would be equal, nonprofit rates would be equal to the resident rate, which is what staff is proposing this evening. On April 23rd, this issue was brought before the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Advisory Committee. The committee did discuss it at length and voted to not recommend approval by the city council, so I did want to make sure that that was clear, they have, they are not supporting this recommendation. Included in your packet are the rates for the multi-generational center, the rental rates, the rental rates for the aquatics facility, parks, fields, and courts, that has been provided. If you look at those rates, you'll again see resident rates and non-resident rates. So what is being recommended to you this evening is that nonprofits receive the same rates as residents. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, and as well, Travis Carlin, the recreation manager is here, in case you have any questions for him.
Thank you very much. You know, I'm interested in this, and I have a few questions for you, but I think part of the reason this is on the agenda today is that, you know, the benefit of, of having this facility here is so that we can be adaptive to the issues and the needs of the community. And, you know, the discussions that I've had with the city manager is that, you know, it is a new facility, we are getting incredible usage out of it, and, you know, the memberships are sky-high, which is wonderful, and I'm glad that people are enjoying it. But to that end, there's also a lot of times in which, you know, some of the rooms sit vacant, that are not being utilized, and so, you know, nonprofits have approached me and other members of council, asking and, and, you know, saying, hey, look, you know, rather than the sitting vacant, is there the potential for a nonprofit rate? And, you know, we could certainly use it, and certainly, in the law of supply and demand, if it's not being utilized, I'd rather have something with somebody paying in there versus nobody paying in there. Now, to that end, I think that, you know, this is about flexibility, and with the flexibility comes, if there comes a time where there's, you know, three deep, waiting for, you know, high times or low times, and those types of things, I think we have to be flexible on that as well, but, you know, I certainly think that, that there should be consideration to these nonprofits. That being said, I'm also interested in inquiring and finding out why the Parks, Recreation, and Library Committee decided to recommend to council that it should not apply here, what their thoughts were, and so I'd welcome that as well.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that there's at least one of our Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Advisory Committee members in the audience who might be willing to speak to you this evening. I, I would share with you, what I heard was that they felt that if a nonprofit was from outside Maricopa, that most appropriately, that nonprofit would pay the non-resident fee, if they were not a Maricopa nonprofit, and if they were a Maricopa nonprofit, they would get the non-res, they would get the resident fee anyway. So that's, that's what I believe I heard during that meeting.
I see. Councilmember Kimball, do you have a thought?
So, to elaborate on that, the, the PRL does not agree with nonprofits outside of Maricopa getting the resident rates, but that's what you're proposing to us, is that any nonprofit gets a resident rate?
That is correct.
But those resident rates are current rates, so there's, there's no, there's no discount for the nonprofit side, is that correct?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, if I, if I'm interpreting what you're saying correctly, a nonprofit here in Maricopa currently gets the resident rate anyway.
Right.
So there wouldn't be an additional discount for them.
Right.
That is correct, under this current proposal.
See, and again, I, I, I don't know, I mean, maybe this is a bigger topic than, than to discuss here tonight, but, but again, I think, when I, when I look at this, I focus on the Multi-Gen Aquatic Center, and I focus on the meeting rooms, the multipurpose dry and the multipurpose wet. Obviously, there are gymnasium times where, you know, people want to use those, certainly for the pools and those types of things, and I get all that, but, but when I, when I think about the daily usage in a nonprofit, I'm thinking of, you know, Maricopa seniors, I'm thinking of, you know, maybe Rotary, I'm thinking of, you know, an HOA that is looking for a location. I mean, that's, that's been the big argument over this entire time, is that the city of Maricopa simply does not have enough locations in which to meet. And so here we've built this beautiful facility on the backs of the taxpayers, and yet, you know, I guess I have an issue where the, the timeframe is, is, there are times in the day when that place sits vacant, those rooms sit vacant, they're not being utilized. So would we not rather encourage people to utilize them, and it's better that we have somebody in there paying 25, or, you know, instead of $50 an hour, they're paying $25 an hour? And so I guess that's, that's my whole thought and argument, is to help these nonprofits in a certain fashion to utilize the meeting room. They're still paying a fee, but the fee is of such a fashion that, that it's at a discounted rate. Now, there's a separate issue here, and that issue is the out-of-city issue. I don't disagree with that one at all. I think that, that, you know, those, those out-of-city areas are not paying the taxes for that building, so, yeah, they should pay a non-resident rate or a resident rate. You know, that would be, that would be their issue, but, but I just think that, that we have to consider the fact that we have to be flexible here, and I, and I just think that as, as time goes on, and, and it's packed, and, you know, every Friday night, there's six, six different organizations that want to utilize it, we're going to have to come up with a policy that, that answers that, or that deals with that, because I don't think that the, the nonprofits should get it every time because they're getting it cheaper. If there, if there are three lined up that want to be, you know, full-time, full-pay, then, then those have to, those have to be considered as well, kind of first come, first served, or however you want to do it. But, but again, I'm just trying to think outside the box a little bit here, and, and I, and again, I understand where the Parks, Recreation, and Library Committee may be coming from, but again, I think that we're trying to figure out a way to utilize the assets we have, and find a way to make it as equitable as possible to all groups out there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One, one strategy I've seen used is developing peak and non-peak timeframes in facilities, so I could offer that up, if that was something that would be the council's pleasure for us to research that. Certainly, there are peak and non-peak times, and if you would like us to consider that, certainly we could pursue something of that nature.
I think that would be very interesting. Councilman Chapados?
Mr. Legner, I have a question. In the research that you did, how did the nonprofit rates compare to the resident rates? I mean, did they do a percentage discount? Is it, you know, like half of what that is? How did they compare in terms of reduction?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chapados, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to bring up recreation manager Travis Carlin, and he did that work for the department, he may be able to answer that for you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chapados, we actually, actually, the different organizations that we surveyed did not actually have a separate rate, so their rate, there was, there was no discount. So either it was listed as a nonprofit was the same as a resident, or it didn't show any type of discount for a nonprofit. So we didn't find an example of that.
In your experience, have you worked for, seen an organization that had an established nonprofit rate that was less than a resident rate?
Yes. When I worked for the, when I worked for the city of Plymouth in Minnesota, we did have some established nonprofit rates for our center. Typically speaking, it was a percentage off of that.
The other issue I have is something we discussed recently when we were talking about reserving city facilities and meeting rooms. You bring up a good point with HOAs needing meeting space, or we've had quite a few requests in the past couple of years of groups that want to meet on a regular basis, and we put limits on how far out in advance you can book these. I also like the idea of the peak and non-peak times, but I think we need to leave staff the flexibility to decide on priority of scheduling, and also based on council's recommendation for, you know, if, if the city needs it for training or whatever, there needs to be a priority list established that extends to this. But I agree with you, Mayor, that I think we need to establish a nonprofit rate, just because that's, that's a way that those people will have access to meeting spaces, or training spaces, or fundraising events that just aren't available here.
Councilmember Kimball?
I, I'm having a hard time differentiating between a nonprofit and a group of people that get together that just want to use the room, that aren't there to make any money, that are residents of the city. That's why I would support keeping the rates, the resident rates the same as the nonprofit rates, except for, like you had mentioned, the out-of-city nonprofits, not meaning like Thunderbird Farms nonprofits, but out of the city of Maricopa and, and Maricopa address. But, but like if a group of people got together not to make money but to use the room, they would be not making a profit, why should they have to pay more than a nonprofit group getting together and renting the room? So I just don't find that there's a difference between a group of people and a nonprofit group of people, so that's just my two cents.
I, I think personally, the nonprofit is someone that's attained that nonprofit status from the IRS, just like Barcelona, just like, you know, these individuals, and in other words, they're supposedly living to this higher standard that they're reporting to the IRS that that's what they're doing. So, you know, again, that's, that, that was my whole rationale behind it, was to have this ability for us to be flexible in this, and, and it's not to say that we don't ever go back to this rate if the demand is such that it is so great, but, but for now, I, I mean, I certainly would love to hear that, but I appreciate your, your counsel as well. Councilmember Brown or Vice Mayor Farrell, do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, I, I agree with the Councilmember Kimball in terms of the distinction.
Okay.
Yes, and I, I would like to know that distinction as well.
So again, you would like to know the distinction in the fashion that they have a nonprofit status like an IRS letter, or you want some definition explanation from our two staffers here?
I agree with the definition.
So a definition of what a nonprofit would, would be?
Mr. Mayor, the definition of a nonprofit for our purposes would be that they have, can demonstrate a tax status per the, either the Fed's federal government, or if there's a state nonprofit status, that they can demonstrate and provide that documentation.
Vice Mayor Farrell, were you able to hear that? Councilmember Brown?
I heard it. Yeah, I heard it.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Kimball?
That wasn't the, the point that I was trying to make. What I was trying to make was that a citizen of Maricopa resident that gets together with a bunch of friends, not to make money but to have a good time or a meeting spot, shouldn't have to pay a higher rate than a IRS-designated nonprofit just because they have that nonprofit. Does that make sense? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just make up one comment. One of the options, I think actually you raised this, was the potential of establishing a lower rate for non-peak hours, and so that would result in a lower fee across the board for nonprofits as well as for residents. So I believe, as well as it would encourage use of the facility, so we would be able to capitalize on greater use, but a lower cost for those individuals during those time periods. And if that is agreeable with the mayor and council, I would like to bring forward a policy to you for consideration that effectuates a lower fee during those times.
Thank you very much. I think that's a very interesting. Um, thank you very much. I, I think that's a very interesting suggestion. Uh, I would support that. I think that that helps drive usage and, and times. Uh, I think that would be very interesting. I certainly would like to hear that. But before we move on, uh, Henry Wade has issued a speaker card here, uh, wanted to speak to the issue, and then I'll go back to council. Sure. Hold on, Henry, sorry.
Sorry.
Councilman Chapados?
City Manager Rose, quick question. With that non-peak hours, would that also be a reduced rate for non-residents as well as residents, or would just be one reduced rate?
Well, that would be determined by the mayor and council, but the, I would suspect the recommendation that you will see, uh, from the city staff is that that would only impact, uh, residents and nonprofits that are within the city of Maricopa.
Thank you. Sorry, Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmembers. Um, a number of questions came up. It's that I came before you, uh, for historical purposes initially, uh, as when I was a member of Plating and zoning, one of the conversations that we had was about this, about whether or not we were offering an opportunity for community members to utilize facilities in different capacities, either as after-hours or as nonprofits or whatever. So that conversation did in fact come forward, and, um, it wa- it was part of the fabric when the, when the Copper Sky was being developed. But in reference to the nonprofit, I, I would like to see a, a definition as well, if you don't mind. Appreciate it, because one of the concerns that I would have, one of the groups that I think might fall out of that, and, and not intentionally, are, um, churches, you know? And churches are, they have a nonprofit status, and they don't operate to make a profit or what have you, and it's not there for entertainment purposes, but they lose their benefit of being a, a place of worship, if you will, that's attached to a nonprofit status. And so that would be something that I would really be concerned with, is defining what that is and making sure that they were included in that process. So that's, historically, we talked about it, land and zoning, nonprofit, certainly would hope that, uh, the churches would be included.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Henry. Um, so the, the item before us is whether to go forward, uh, with the recommendation, or to decide to change that and add a nonprofit, uh, status or definition, or third, uh, move to just, uh, have really a discussion on this, uh, almost tabling this issue or issuing guidance, uh, to the fact that we'd like to see it more from a non-peak, a peak versus non-peak hourly rate, um, and, and thereby absolve any of the nonprofit versus profit, uh, for-profit entities, and, and just look at on-peak, off-peak, uh, instead. So council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Campbell?
I would, the latter of what you just said, so the, the third option would be, I would support tabling it, coming back with a peak, non-peak for everybody.
Okay, so peak, non-peak. Councilman Chapados?
I would support that as well.
Peak, non-peak. Uh, Vice Mayor Farrell? Vice Mayor Farrell, do you have a, an opinion on that? Seems as we lost him. Uh, Councilmember Brown?
I support what you're saying.
Su- support the, uh, peak, non-peak?
That's right.
Okay. So the motion then, uh, if I can have a motion, is to table this item, uh, with the, uh, decision to do a peak, non-peak timeframe, and bring this back to council for decision then. So can I have a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor to table the item with that designation? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item ten point five, uh, we're gonna, city council should discuss the possibility to take action on a recommendation in the Parks, Recreation and Library Advisory Committee to approve a park recreation alcohol policy. This is for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, as you stated, I have a parks and recreation alcohol policy in front of you for your consideration. Uh, currently, there is a ten-dollar alcohol permit that can be purchased, and it allows, um, patrons to consume beer and wine, uh, in the parks. And for softball teams, there's a ten-dollar permit per game or an eighty-dollar permit per season that can be purchased at the time, uh, the softball teams register. Uh, with the cop- with Copper Sky opening, uh, the department realized that, uh, we needed to reconsider, uh, the policy and, uh, and look at it again so that accommodations could be made or decisions could be made for the multi-generational center, um, as well as all the Ramadas and the, the softball area of Copper Sky. Uh, the staff did meet with Commander Hughes from the Maricopa Police Department. He was, um, worked very closely with staff in the development of this policy, as well as working with our legal, uh, staff to make sure that we were, um, appropriately wording the policy. This particular recommended policy does cover three areas. It covers, as I mentioned, alcohol, uh, use in the multi-generational center, um, alcohol for events in the parks for private events like family reunions or birthday parties, and the third area it covers is alcohol for city-sponsored adult softball programs. I'll just briefly cover what's included. Um, for alcohol for events in the multi-generational center, there is a two-week, uh, lead time that's required for groups of under fifty individuals, and a thirty-day lead time for groups of, uh, for events that are fifty people or more. And for consumption of alcohol, uh, beer and wine in the multi-generational center, it's recommended that a catering license be required, um, and used for, for all events. So in other words, people wouldn't bring their own, uh, beer and wine in, that they would have to have a caterer provide that. For groups of fifty or more, uh, a, um, uniformed off-duty officer would, it would be a requirement that, uh, they'd be hired for all events over fifty people inside the multi-generational center. And of course, for all of these sections, all of the individuals with alcohol permits would have to follow all federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations. The second area that I mentioned was alcohol for events in the park for private events, again, birthday parties, family reunions, et cetera. This particular recommend- recommended policy identifies exactly which Ramadas the alcohol could be consumed in. Any of the Ramadas that are loca- that are co-located near, uh, the playground, uh, facilities would not be included. The Ramadas that are listed are only for, uh, areas that are not near playgrounds. For these particular permits, a forty-eight-hour advance, uh, would be required for groups of under fifty people. And again, for the groups over fifty, fifty and over, it would be required, uh, a thirty-day advance because, uh, once again, um, a off-duty uniformed officer would be required to be hired, uh, for those events. The reason that the lead time for groups under fifty is so, so much shorter is because, uh, in this case, for alcohol consumption, wine and beer in Ramadas, patrons could bring their own wine and beer, and it would not be required that they would have to have a caterer. They could bring in their own. And once again, they would have to follow all federal, state, and local, uh, laws and requirements. And the third area, uh, is alcohol for city-sponsored adult softball programs. Um, this is, uh, modeled after the existing, uh, program that we have, that's been in, in, in effect at Pecanah Park for, for quite some time. Um, the, uh, once again, the teams would apply for the permit at the time of registration for the softball team. It would cover registered players only, and, um, they, like, once again, can bring their own beer and wine. Um, to establish the best practices locally, uh, four other local municipalities were contacted, and we found out two important things. First of all, we found out that our ten-dollar rate is low compared, compared to other jurisdictions. And we aren't going to be addressing that with you this evening, but we'll be bringing something back to you in, in the near-term future to address that issue. Secondly, we did determine that our guidelines, because it had only been for, uh, Pecanah Park, which didn't have any indoor facilities, we obviously did need to, uh, provide a policy that would cover the multi-generational center, um, and for safety and security purposes, and that has been included in this policy that's recommended. So the draft policy on the twenty-third of April was taken to the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Advisory Committee. Uh, they did provide input, and that input has been included in the document that's in front of you. And again, the document was reviewed by legal to ensure, um, the proper wording and that we were covering all our bases. Um, I, I did receive some, uh, additional input from the, from one community member who suggested that we might want to put some additional, uh, detail in. Certainly, that can be accomplished if council wishes to do that. Um, that, any additional detail that you would like can be accomplished. But any detail that isn't included, please know that we are covered by that, um, language that says that all federal, state, and local, uh, regulations and requirements have to be met. So if there's any granular detail that's, for instance, existing in our softball league documentation that the leagues have to sign and agree to before participation were covered. And also, if there's ever any additions to any of those requirements, our, um, policy doesn't become obsolete. But certainly, anything that council wishes to add, we can easily add, no problem. One more thing, um, if council does wish to move forward with approval of this, on page two and section seven, uh, the beginning of that first sentence talks about, um, renters, and I would ask that that first two words be, instead of renters, that it be changed to softball participants. It's just a cleanup item that, um, I would like to ask that you change for me, please, if you decide to move forward. We'd be happy to entertain your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, questions? Councilman Chapados?
Thank you, Ainsley. Um, I just have a couple of, of concerns. With all three of these areas, I, I think I would like to see a little more detail as to where the alcoholic beverage needs to be consumed. Um, if somebody rents one of the meeting rooms or the activity rooms, I don't want to see people walking out into the splash pad or out into the grass. If it's in a Ramada, they need to be contained under the Ramada. Um, with the softball leagues, it should be limited to the stands or the seating areas, parking lot, not in the dugouts, not on the field. And I think that kind of detail is important. The other thing, um, in the section for city-sponsored adult softball programs, item number seven, it says consumption must cease thirty minutes after the conclusion of games. I think just a little more detail, because I understand some of the leagues that play, they may have as much as an hour in between games. So at the end of the scheduled series, whatever you want to say, so these guys, if, if, if we do approve this, if they have a downtime, that's when they can go out into the parking lot or in the bleachers or whatever.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Campbell?
Councilwoman Chapados just pretty much mentioned everything that I wanted to mention, so, good to go.
Okay. Vice Mayor Farrell? Any thoughts on this?
I'm fine.
Councilwoman Brown?
Well, it's, 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 I, I, I'm not supposed to be, but, uh, also I have to, that's a question.
Sorry, Councilwoman Brown, we had a little tough time hearing you. I apologize.
I said I don't have any, I can tell you, I'm, I'm, I've impressed with Ainsley's presentation, but, uh, uh, I have some other questions before I give a vote on this.
Okay. Thank you very much. We were able to hear you that time. Appreciate it. All right. Uh, anything else that needs to be discussed on this? Can I have a motion? Please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Gen. Item ten point four with the recommended changes as discussed.
Second.
It's ten point five. Excuse me, it's ten point five. So the, the motion is to, to approve item ten point five with the, with the amended, uh, items, correct?
Amended language changes, right.
Okay, and that was seconded?
Yes, second.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, item ten point six, the mayor and city council chair presentation offering a wrap-up of the 2014 Arizona Legislative Session. This is by our intergo, Paul.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I just wanted to offer a concise wrap-up of the 2014 Arizona Legislative Session. Uh, the, um, let's go to the slides. Opening day for the, it's the fifty-first legislative second, second regular session, so this is the, the, the fourth cycle of Governor Brewer's term. Uh, opening day, January thirteenth, uh, signing day, April twenty-fourth, uh, one forty-six AM in the morning. That's fairly early in the evening for, for our legislature. Usually, they go three to four in the morning, but, um, hundred and two days, that's really good also. Uh, usually, they, they go much past that. Uh, they, they shoot for a hundred days. Uh, low number of bills proposed, they were usually about thirteen to fourteen-hundred bills. They proposed, uh, uh, one thousand two hundred and five. Uh, of those passed out of the legislature, uh, two hundred and seventy-six were signed by the governor, twenty-four vetoed. And then most of the vetoed ones were, were very, uh, needed to, well, they, they were key vetoes, I would say. Um, they did, they did come together and pass a nine-point-two-billion-dollar budget. Um, that actually was the, the, the smoothest part of this session, I think. It was, every session has its characterizations. This was a very different, um, session. Uh, not a lot of big items, a lot of people gotten the, the big issues done. Uh, it was mostly cleanup bills, but what I call a, a lot of, maybe no one's looking bills. It's like, maybe I can slide this under the radar before the new elections, and, and some got caught and some didn't. Uh, but it was, it was interesting, and so we were watching those. In trying to figure, in trying to decide how to present this to the council, um, I thought I'd compare what we presented in December thirteen about this session compared to what I was looking for and watching out for to what actually happened. So, uh, the Maricopa's, uh, 2014 legislative agenda for the state, uh, all, of course, want to protect all revenue sources, including state shared. Uh, uh, we did protect state shared, uh, we restored partially HERF. Uh, there is a tax credit, uh, twenty-four forty-eight, which would allow people to take up to a hundred-thousand-dollar credit if they felt their property value was harmed. Uh, that one kind of sneaked through at the end, we, and, and used, uh, Maricopa helped in the effort to, uh, to quash that. Uh, it, it was, uh, it had been killed once, came back as a striker, um, but it, it was, it would have allowed a person to take a tax credit from the state without even talking to the city. We would have to fight it on the backside. So that was important to stop that. Um, one of the other legislative agenda, uh, items was oppose cost shifting on the cities. Um, there were two gun bills that were, were very important. One would have, uh, disallowed cities from passing any gun bills other than what the state had, and held elected officials and city officials financially responsible if, if they willingly violated the state law. It, they, they would have been able to fine elected officials five thousand dollars, uh, for going against this bill. But the more important one was one that if, if you did not have metal detectors and guards posted, that you could not stop somebody from carrying, uh, concealed or openly into a public meeting. And, and that one was, was passed but vetoed. And so, uh, it would have put the, the burden on the city to pay for those, uh, metal detectors if we wanted to, to, to do that. So that was one of those cost shifts that we, we were able to stop. Protect local control. Um, the, the prime example of this is what we call the chicken bill. It was, they, they cleaned it up, they called it the, uh, it was more about fowl, so it included geese and ducks and things like that, but no roosters. Roosters are too loud, but it, it allowed, it, it denied the city the ability to block a person from having any type of fowl in the yard, except for roosters, because they grow, or whatever they do in the morning. Anyways, it was kind of, um, I mean, it got a lot of laughs, but it got a lot of traction, and so we did finally put an effort together to, Mr. Mayor, you're still smiling, but we put an effort together to, you, this thing...
This was a fowl bill, so, you know, the jokes, the jokes were endless here.
Oh, it was endless, endless. He, they were flying everywhere. Um, it, so they... The, um, but the state was trying to delve into city and towns zoning ordinances. Town, uh, zoning is something traditionally done by cities. It's our purview- done by cities. It's our purview. It's where we do our best work. State should not be involved, and based on that, we did make a strong stand and protect our local control. We adopted positive structures and reforms, not so much involved with Maricopa, but I know that CPS and Health and Human Services, the governor's trying to fix a lot of things there. We, as a city, didn't have a horse in that game, or should I say it? Well, I won't do any more chicken jokes. But the governor's been working on that. They'll have a special session on that also. Create economic development tools. This session did not have a lot of activity on strong economic development tools. It's too bad, but it's something that we really need. So, this was not a big item legislative session. Do no harm. We stopped many. There, the list goes on for some of this. Bills that were just odd and not really, you know, they were there, people trying to, again, sneak them under the wire. I think one of the other, the biggest ones, I know we saw earlier, was something called the Liberty Bill, which established a zone of no control. And so, it would establish a zone where you'd have a charter that was, that cleared zoning and different types of eminent domain. So, it was, it was a zone of, a charter that contained of different things, lack of things. It's hard to explain. It was killed early. But those are the kind of things that we have to look for and make sure they don't get the traction, and there were some out there. The Maricopa's watch list, this is what we were looking for. In the italics, we said in December, when managed TPT, the fixes that we're going through were true. They were necessary. There wasn't any hanky-panky. I think TPT is still an issue that we're trying to get right. There's a website involved, and I'll tell you, everybody was very concerned about taking their time on the website. So, that's really important. Restoration of HERF, that was a battle. It was leverage on the budget. We restored it for the cities, not for the state, but it did bring back $132,000 to Maricopa. That's important. Support, we reran the pinch-point bill, which was stalled, but we did save that, and we saved it actually by saving another bill that was, had gotten caught in crossfire, and that was 1415, which is a, it deals with a calculation of what a majority is based on the previous election. It's complicated, but it, the end result would have been to cost certain cities, force them into runoff elections needlessly. And so, we teamed up with Gilbert and Queen Creek, and not only did they help us get 2126 passed, but we helped them rescue 1415, and that was, that was some stuff we did at the very end that was very important. Builder bills, we didn't see anything really from the home builders. They're, they've done a lot this past five years, I think. You know, they pretty much, they're settled, they're happy. And then, there was a, beginning of the year, there was a push for a flat tax, died early, never really got any traction, never made it into legislative form. So, that was, that was good. Now, you always have your big unknown. We always look for the, there's always one bill every year that no one saw coming. Many years it involves us. This year, it did not. SB 1061, we saw early that it was not something we should really even sign off on or voice our control. This was a bill that blew up in the media, national attention. Cities had stayed clear. I think the, I don't want to bring back up the bill. I think what you, what legislators learned is, if you're going to offer a fix for something, you should have a problem that's actually occurring and has a track record. This was an attempt to fix something that really wasn't broken at the time, and it was unfortunate. Looking to the future, special session on CPS. I talked to Representative Smith. I'm not sure exactly when they're going to call that back in, but they do need to do some structural fixes there. That's probably the only, a special session, that'll be the only topic. November elections are coming up. Everybody's, they're out of there in 102 days because they have campaigns to run. That kind of helped push everybody along. But we will be facing new members of the House and Senate in District 11, a new governor coming on board, we know that for sure, and possibly new state directors. I mean, we deal with state agencies, especially ADOT, and those are appointees of the governor, and when that changes, we may have, that may do a little deck shuffling on some of the issues that are very important in Maricopa. The future state revenue projections, there are some discrepancies on how they're projecting that. This was a good year on projections, but there's some hints out there that next year it may not be as rosy based on the state. I don't know how that's going to play out. And we're still going to watch implementation of TPT reform. That is the big, the big one that really has a chance to hurt us if we're not careful on that. We know we're going to take a little bit of a hit, but we're going to watch that. So, that's all I have for you, but questions, and I just wanted to let you know that we wrapped up the session and we were watching, watching the big house up there in Phoenix.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions, council, on the legislative update? Yeah, another session where we got to do both our jobs and the legislative jobs. It was excellent time. Now, thank you very much for all your work on that, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. That moves us on to the final item of the night, 10.7, an ordinance with the mayor and city council, the city of Maricopa. Arizona amending section 2-13 of the Maricopa City Code regarding vacancies in council and providing for severability and the effective date thereof. This is for discussion and action. Vanessa?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this ordinance before you is just to clean up the code, section 2-13 regarding filling vacancies on the council. We're amending it to be consistent with state statute, so you'll no longer have the ability to fill a vacancy for the remainder of the term.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Move.
That's a motion to approve. Can I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapados?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, again, many thanks to those on the phone. I know you've had a long day, so get some rest. And can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We're closed. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.